I call this meeting to state the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Move on please.
Mayor Patterson. Mr. Richmond. Mr. Cook. Ms. Hefner. Mr. Engard. Mr. Swett. Ms. Boeckrich.
We've noted in approval of minutes.
Make a motion to put those for July 8, 2025.
Motion on the floor for a second. Is there any additions or corrections, amendments?
Who gives a second?
Mr. Cook.
Thank you.
Vote ready please.
Mr. Richmond.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Ms. Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. Engard.
Yes.
Mr. Swett.
Yes.
Ms. Boeckrich.
Moving on to public participation. Mrs. Lindquist, do you have the floor?
Before you begin, everyone, this is in regards to ordinance number 2025-20. As vacating a portion of the underbleed right of way known as Oak Street. Extra hours, basically. So anyways, vote for that.
Okay, I bought my property back in 2001. And this, I have an underbridged alleyway in between. And ever since I've lived there, I have maintained, maintained it. I've mowed it regularly. And if I'm not in town, I have somebody else mow it. And so, I would like to.
Um, Mrs. Lindquist, am I the, or so I drove by there. Obviously, I drive over there as I go to work. It looks like Oak Street goes right into, um, somebody else's driveway. And so what, what we've done in the past is whenever we vacate something, one homeowner gets half.
And that would help my relationship with my neighbor.
And you would get, you would get from, from the middle of the vacated alleyway or roadway all the way to your property.
Yeah.
Isn't that, is that a good question?
Mr. Capell would get, uh, half of it. He would get the other half.
Yeah.
Uh, the half that he would get actually would include his used driveway, basically. Uh, but again, it is currently an unimproved right of way. So, I think it makes sense to correct that.
Correct.
And, uh, hold to the steps right now. This is the first reading.
Okay.
Thank you. Moving on, uh, Ms. Ottinger wants to address this body. Hello?
Hello. Yes, I just wanted to-
You have the floor.
Just wanted to address about 2025-15, the purchase of the old football field y'all call it the human property, but are owned by Nomad Properties. We spoke about this at the community as a whole last week. There were residents present that shared their concerns with what would happen with that property. Where, you know, as a resident, I'm concerned about spending funds for a vacant lot when the village owns other lots where things could be done. And so I'm hoping that the consideration of those who were here last week and our discussion will be taken into consideration as you continue the voting on this issue.
Did you have anything else you wanted to share?
Yes, I could, but quick. I forgot to put it on there. It's about sidewalks. We've been talking about possibility. And I don't know if you're aware, or maybe it's intentional, I'm not sure. You cannot go from Main Street down East Broadway to access the mail office unless you're like an individual. Like I was pushing a stroller with my grandson.
Oh, I noticed that today. I thank you. It's very recent development.
Do it because of the signage and its placement.
Do they have, do they have the sidewalk?
Blocked. Except for the very little part between where you push the button for the crossing signs, which aren't working right now because it's a flashing light. So, it's just a very narrow little spot. So you cannot have anything but an individual squeezed through that little area.
So do you have to go around?
You must go around, either out into the street to go around, or back down and around through the alley.
You, you can't go to the other side of Broadway down and then across?
Well, yeah, but you have to go down and then over. But you're still going over where they're working. So it's very uneven.
Yeah, it's very unfortunate. I did notice that this morning, actually. I'll look at it again tomorrow. See if any solutions you can come to with Holy Brink out there.
Accessibility. But they're gonna do that as a contractor for safety purposes. They shut down the, they shut down sidewalks. We have to do it all the time.
Yes.
So I mean, that's unfortunate. And we're, and we're sorry for that.
Yeah, I see.
It's just for the, it's for the, it's for the public safety.
Oh, absolutely. When they're working there, it's absolutely understandable.
Yes.
But when ain't nobody working there.
I, I, I get it. Yes. I get it. Did you have anything else, Ms. Ottinger?
No, nothing to thank you.
Thank you for addressing us. Appreciate it. Um, moving on. Letters of communications. Anybody had any? Okay, moving on. Administrative reports, finance officer's report. Get this in your packet.
Yeah, to point out a few things. Uh, we talked about interest rates quite a bit over the last few months. Fed reserves next meeting, September 16th. Uh, Star Ohio's currently paying for 24, 5%. That's fairly steady.
Has that, has that changed, Matt, from where it was?
It's only been going up and down literally like a thousands of a point.
So I think we all know that the president's upset because they're, they're, because they're holding where they're at. So it's probably a good thing at this point that we didn't move on that, but assume that?
That's a good assessment at this point. As far as whether it drops in September, we'll kind of monitor. There's probably a good chance, but
Yep.
But I think we still have a committee as a whole and a regular meeting before then. I disperse the JED out. Been doing it roughly every three to four months. If you look at the financial report, be the cash summary by fund, the last four funds are, I mean, they're all labeled JED. 9201, 29204. You can track that it was distributed by the fund balance. It shows that North Baltimore currently has $73,652. That would be the portion that, uh, North Baltimore has and can use for whatever projects or expenses they see fit. So, just an easy way to track the, how that's progressing. Been communicating some with Matt Davis. He's the fiscal officer for, for Henry Township. So he's kind of like my counterpart. He emailed in the last couple of days. We're just starting the process to look at expanding the JED. So that's gonna take some time. When I say that, the area of which businesses could be, could locate. So, so there is some, trying to make some headway there.
So do you know, are you, are you trying to let North Star and them?
Yeah. Nor, nor at that point.
Nor at that point, yes. Yes. May have got this at the last check.
Okay, perfect. Other than that.
Any questions for our finance officer? Moving on to EMS chief is here. Appreciate you coming up. Did you have anything you wanted to share with us tonight?
Nothing new.
Wonderful. Thank you. Any questions for our EMS chief?
Nope.
How did our, um, did they diagnose that engine?
No. I told the mayor yesterday that it was gonna give me news yesterday or today, but they called me today and I thought, here we go.
Um, just if I, if I may, um, he is looking at possibly, but, um, looking at, we don't know if this is gonna come to fruition. It's brand new. Possible opportunity that somebody is selling a very dependable EMS used like we purchased in the past. So he's looking at it at this point. We may be bringing that to you in the future. We would get rid of our oldest one. Is that our oldest one?
It's the, it's the O2.
Yep, so the O2, I mean, it's 2020, O2. If, if that comes, I'll just let you know that. Maybe coming down the line.
It's gonna be, uh-
There's, there's no-
If one, it'll help us get through this hard time because it's gonna be a while before we get this truck back on the road, we're sure. And two, it would be, uh, advise time before we have to, uh, make the next step for another truck.
For a brand new one, right? Later on down, down the road. But, but, uh, so right now we got like our 2002. It's, is that, that's our oldest one that we're gonna replace?
The oldest one is 2000. That's the, the big one that you got in.
Went in yesterday. Okay. And then we got the 2002 that we got.
And then 2019 is in the shop.
So it would, it would replace one, one in the fleet if-
But I'm looking at a 2011 with, uh, relatively low miles for a diesel. Uh, everything's in great working shape. It's, uh, an old employee of mine is now the chief over at, uh, 150 over in the Wayne area. And he says he's gonna try to make us a good deal to get that in our fleet.
Something that the chief-
But as far as the one we have right now, I, uh, there was another fumble today. A guy called me up and said that the extensions that he got for his lift came in. He was not able to reach the entire proper point, lift points along the ambulance. But once they started lifting, their machine, their lift made all kinds of crazy noises and everything.
What happened?
They said, no, we ain't lifted that ambulance. And I guess the way their, the way their system works is they're gonna pull the starter and run a camera up through them. But I guess this camera is actually like on their computer. He goes, I can't get my computer up under there. I can't get, you know, so I had to bring up in the air. So, it's coming home tomorrow, but I'm gonna try to find another place to bed off. And I'm gonna ask every single one, can you lift an ambulance before they get to it? So, yeah, it slows down a little bit.
Well, is, is it, not saying that there's anything wrong with the two that we have, but they are very old. And if we lost another unit, we could possibly be-
That's the important stuff.
So we certainly wanna have, make sure that our fleets and our used fleets are very dependable. Not saying that they're not. That's why he's continuing to read.
I'll let you know more on that as-
Thank you.
That transpires.
That's just the beginning stages of even talking about it. Did you have anything else you wanted to share, chief? Moving on. Any questions for chief? Moving on, police chief. Uh, acting police chief Sergeant Brochus. Did you have something, anything tonight?
Just the radar, or the radios.
Repeat.
Did get that final quote from Ray Railcom is the name of the company. And he did send out some more suggestions. So we have the quote for the repeaters and the cruisers, which you guys have in front of you. And then his other suggestion would be to, uh, like part two of it. So you could do it in phases is kind of what he was thinking rather than sticker shot for all at once. Uh, part two would be upgrading dispatch.
Okay.
If you go up there and take a look at that.
Okay, so I'd like to interject for a second. So we went out Saturday. So Mr. Andrew Bermeister and Ted, Ted had to go to another meeting. He was gonna address us on this.
Right.
He can come up here, but he's in his township. He's gonna get back up here as quick as he can. Um, we went out, um, and it's very important that we do change that over there. And here's why. So as we went out, so one of the, we use a fire truck repeater, went out to everywhere that is, is said that it was dead for us. And Mr. Bermeister used his, um, port, his portable, um, that he always uses. And, um, we could hear it. Um, it was static. Everything we got back from dispatch was static. You could hear her, but it depended on where we was at, right? When he used the portable that was a repeater, that went to the repeater, it was phenomenal. Everything was clear. Cause he walked. So Mr., he went into sheets and it, you could hear it. It was just wonderful that the, we went out to the apartments where we get, he actually went into an apartment. Somebody let him in there. Uh, you could hear him. Still got a little bit of static coming back from, um, dispatch. Could hear her, but it was a little, um, distorted. Then he walked, like, I don't know where he walked to. He walked to like way on the other side of the, well, from, cause we parked right by Pol Road where you first go in.
Right.
He walked way over through the apartments and then I, I don't know, he tried to get lost. And we could hear him clear as day with, I mean, it was, it was really good. So then we went out to the other dead spot that we have is out by, um, um, on Grant Road.
Baker Feeds.
Baker Feeds. And, um, the same thing. So we do know for a fact, and Ted can speak on this a little bit later when he comes up for lots more details. Um, they work and they work very good. We did have some distortion coming back from, um, as I said, dispatch. So that, that would make a lot of sense that he, he came up there and seen that.
Yeah, Bruce, Bruce was looking at that. And what he, his suggestion was obviously getting rid of that 1980s unit you guys had.
Cause I donated it.
Donate it back. But the other issue we looked at was the actual antenna and the age on the antenna that we are using for the police department. So the very top antennas from the fire departments, fire chief was out here with us the other day and we were looking at the actual tower back there.
Thought they just got put up?
I thought we put it- The tower got put up, but they didn't replace the antennas. The antennas are old. Okay, yeah, he's, the fire chief said his is at least 15 years old, but he's not using his like we are using ours for communication. So we're the second lowest one, um, below the very top one antenna. Um, and he said, you know, to get over 10 years, you probably should be replacing them. And, and the fire chief thought that was at least maybe 15, maybe a little bit longer of the actual antenna that's on there. So Bruce, um, recommended that maybe the next phase, fixing dispatch and putting up a new antenna. He said all of it, it's not very expensive, but it is expensive. Hiring company to come out and put an antenna up there. So they had to get a lift. They have to go up there, take that antenna down, put another new antenna up. He said that's the cost. It is that. But he was thinking a couple of grand probably covered the whole thing. So it's not a lot of money.
Sure.
Um, he did recommend, um, cleaning up the tower though. So there's a lot of antennas up there. He said, we probably need to figure out what antennas go to what. And if they're not being used, remove those.
On, on this antenna?
This, this tower.
Okay, now on.
This tower right here. So that's what his recommendation was. Since you're gonna hire a company to come up here and, uh, in the future, put a new antenna up for us. Maybe taking down some of the ones that aren't being used. So the fire chief was kinda, he thought some was this, some was this. So, you know, we have to get this chief involved and be out there. Uh, the street department involved, cause they have an antenna out there. Um, and then you have, uh, something, I think, for your cable or something like that.
So just kind of clean it up?
Yeah, he says, and then it helps with weight. So when they build up with ice, you get a lot of wind. You know, you could have problems with all the antennas that you have up there.
Sure.
With just the weight of it. So-
That's good to know.
Yeah. So he said, in the future, if you're gonna replace that antenna, have them clean it up and get rid of stuff that isn't being used. So.
So clarity for counsel.
That was part two.
Uh, this is in regards to resolution number 22-2025. It was amended, uh, on the agenda. So under communications, that should be Railcom now. And we're gonna go with a $13,000 quote from Railcom instead of a $20,000 quote.
Twenty-one thousand.
Twenty-one thousand, approximately, under communications.
Is the recommendation. Anything else on that, chief? Any questions about the repeaters? Ted said, um, is there any questions on the repeaters? Cause if not, will you? Do you have Ted's number? Or maybe can you reach out every time? It's not necessarily he come up here unless somebody asks questions for him about the repeaters? Go ahead.
So then, to clarify, we were gonna put the repeaters up on a tower, but now you're talking about the vehicle ones instead?
They go, right, they go in the vehicle.
Yes. And we're saving a lot of money.
Saving a lot of money, plus the repeater's right there. It's, it's right there. Instead of having to go from here to Grant Road then back up to here, it's, it's right in, it's in the car. And it was, it worked magnificent Saturday.
It'll help tremendously. It's like they're in Bowling Green at court or something, or dropping somebody off at jail. It'll help, cause now they only gotta go to their car repeater instead of trying to trigger the repeater on the tower from 13 mile.
I have a favor to ask. Phil, could you shut that hall light off for now?
Can I have one key blinky one?
Yeah. Thank you. Will you please, will you please reach out to Ted and let him know that he might have to come up here so he doesn't waste his time? Thank you.
Thanks, Sergeant.
Anything else, Sergeant Brochus, at this time?
Yeah, I know. We're gonna talk about personnel or-
Yeah, do we wanna talk about-
Do that later. Sorry.
Plan during, during executive session, but certain aspects, maybe we'll talk about now if you'd like.
Um, Mr. Robert Thomas is, is, he is, he last week, we hired him on full time?
Yeah. And do they have to do something as well or no? That's just done.
That's done. He's a full, he's, he is full time right now. You have, you have a recommendation that you wanna share with counsel about making him administrative sergeant?
Right. That, I did write a letter for the mayor. I did talk to police chief about this. So he and I have been talking. I talked to him today. Uh, his, both of our recommendation would be to promote, um, Tom to administrative sergeant. So I would be the road sergeant, which I, which I have been for a while since I've been here. Um, I have select duties that I'm supposed to be taking care of, and I do. Uh, Tom, his responsibility would be to, uh, the evidence room, which needs to be-
You, you want to read them off? You want to read them off?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I got it right here. So, um, so for, so what this would come with is a $2 an hour, per hour wage resolution. Um, but he would be taking care of the evidence room, the department TAC for leads and OLE, scheduling of officers. Uh, complete any video record, recordings that, that would help us tremendously with our information requests. Get that up to date. Um, firearms qual, but, so he's a firearms qualified. He can qualify.
He's our instructor for hangar. We sent him to school for that. He's currently in school for rifle right now.
Okay, so firearms qualification officer, firearms armorer.
Yes.
And he would help order supplies related to all firearms and other designated duties that the chief or the sergeant would put up on him. So that would come with, and we currently do not have that position filled. So I, I think it would just in helping out with the evidence room and, uh, with, he's gonna take care of our video redaction, right? Once we get that
Right.
System
Right.
Up to where it needs to be.
Right. Cause right now I've been doing all of that. So I burn the videos and then I bring the videos over to, to Josh, the village administrator, to, for him to send to the company.
But he's gonna, we're gonna get him to where he can redact the videos for us too over there. The ones that have to be in-house.
Right.
Correct? Yes, we'll get that. So he's gonna burn the videos, but he will also be doing what Mandy used to do.
Right.
Or, uh, uh. So, um-
So do we need a motion on that?
Well, in just a second. Is there, yeah, we, we won't need a motion on that because it's $2 an hour raise and he's getting, um, a promotion. Um, but he would be taking care of quite a few things over there that need to be taken care of. So, um, yes, can I get a, can I get a motion to, um, promote Mr. Roberts, Thomas Roberts, um, as our administrative sergeant? Um, with a $2 per hour increase according to our wage scale. Our wage scales are, it's already in the wage scale.
I'll second that.
There's a motion in a second. Is there any other discussion on that recommendation? Vote ready please.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Ms. Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Engard?
Yes.
Mr. Swett?
Yes.
Ms. Boeckrich? Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
Thank you very much. It's gonna help us clean up some resolved issues over there. Is there anything else you wanna talk about in the regular session?
No.
Um, does anybody have any questions for the sergeant? Moving on, utilities director, uh, he was up there last week. Um, oh, yeah. What, I think we've got, I think this rec, recommendation goes under the utilities and that.
I was gonna talk about that during executive session. If you could please move that to there for discussion.
Hiring of an operator?
Yes.
Well, I'm saying it's on the wrong.
It is that too.
Okay, that's fine. Great. So utility director, um, water tower. What's the water tower?
Uh, the water tower, I would say is the cleaning of the tower, right?
Yeah, cleaning the tower, yes.
Yes. Uh, it's under $10,000. It's within his spending threshold. And we talked about it briefly during community of whole. Mr. Swett, do you wanna add anything else to that?
Uh, no, just that, uh, it needs to be cleaned before they can get the paint assessment done. So whether we do it now. So I know there was some concern about cleaning it and then maybe having to clean it again before we have to get it more than likely painted. But he said it needs to be cleaned before you can do that inspection.
So is he gonna get it inspected? Like is the cleaning, so it's cleaning to get it paint inspected, correct?
Yes.
Cause I know we didn't do that in the past, right?
Yeah.
And this is what with our, it costs us $150,000, I think, because
Yeah.
Because the paint was, oh, it was, it was a nightmare what, what-
Yeah, it sounds like he's working to get ahead of it.
So he's trying to get ahead of it.
Yeah.
And I've talked to him about it.
Yeah, and it's, and it looks bad. So it needs to be cleaned and, uh, then, um, I think next year was the plan on.
So the, the, the quote is within his spending threshold?
Yes.
Does anybody have any concerns with him going forward? Any, okay?
I have a question. Um, as we crossed this before, because it was brought up. Uh, what do we want painted on it? Just our town name?
Well, we're just cleaning.
We're just talking about cleaning.
Yeah, yeah, that'll be next year.
Yeah, can we talk about that?
Yeah, we'll discuss it next year.
Yeah. Anything else for utility director? Any questions for Mr. Roberts? Uh, Department of Public Works, there's no, any questions for Mr. Long? You got anything you wanna share from the public works?
They're doing a great job right now and, uh, yeah, that's it.
All right. And no questions. Moving on to the administrative report.
Okay.
It is in your packet.
I've amended one on your desk there in front of you. Uh, it was amended a couple of- East Broadway Resourcing Project, uh, because of some unforeseen additions that we had to sign off on with ODOT. Uh, that project, the completion date is now moved until approximately mid-November. Uh, we're still getting a firm date on that, but, uh, we'll, we'll figure that out. Now make sure I counsel it is in the know. And then Water Street Bridge Project, we're actually gonna expect that to be done earlier than expected. So different date.
Doesn't take long time to build a bridge.
So, that's how we know. Uh, so yeah, mid-September, uh, we're expecting the bridge to be done. And I know Aviant is gonna be grilled especially, but also residents.
Um, they did pour the bridge deck from what I understand, or you're aware of that? The bridge deck has been poured, so they are moving right along. So it's wonderful. So, and I shouldn't have said it doesn't take long to build a bridge, but not a puddle jumper like this one. It's just a little puddle jumper. But, um, yeah, from what I understand, I got a call yesterday and they did pour the bridge deck, which is fantastic. I drove by and seen the bidwell set up. So I knew it was close and, and, and it's been poured. So that's a step in the right direction.
Can I ask a quick question on East Broadway? That's for you both of you guys. Did the GeoGrid and everything get installed? No more issues with that?
I don't think so.
Did you guys, yeah, I seen it, I seen it was down. Did you guys, did, did everybody get, uh, so we walked it. We walked the project. Does everybody know that? Did you share that with them?
I have not, no.
Okay. So we walked the project, um, ran into some, there was more, so we're, the, the point of where it was a total reconstruct, there was, the reason why it needed to be reconstructed, because it's all sand underneath there. The sand went deeper than they'd assumed. Obviously, it was the soil boring tests. I don't know if they weren't accurate or what. They were from a while ago. I don't know. Uh, they, they had to go deeper to try to get some stable ground. If they did, they were gonna put what's called GeoGrade down. It's hard plastic. It's the stuff that I've got down there that I told you about. Um, and then you bring it up in, in, in not only smaller lifts, but, um, you put more three or four down, which, which helps. We should have a good product. We will have a good product, um, by doing that. Um, one other thing I wanna share, as we walked the project, there was only four catch basins in that whole project scheduled to be replaced. Couldn't believe it. That means they was leaving, some of them that were still brick and leaving all the junk. So Josh and I, uh, the gentleman that is, that is, so we said, no, replace it. Like, right, we're not gonna have this done. So it's about 25, so he's gonna submit, submit that to the state, cause there's still some money left over, um, that we have not used. But that's not guaranteed that the state's gonna pay for it. So it, but we have to, we have to replace it.
Right.
So we may assume those costs. I hope we don't have to. There's still money in the, in the, in the, in the gray.
Right.
But we can't do a project like this and have the old catch basins in there. It's the old, I mean, some of them weren't even flowing. And we said, yeah, I mean, guys, we can't do-
How many are we looking at?
Uh, I think there was 13.
13, did we were gonna replace four?
And there was only gonna replace four. What's that?
I'm sorry, how much are they a piece?
$2,500. Yep. Um, but guys, I mean, to, to have this project done and then turn around and say, oh my gosh, we, no, I mean, that would be foolish. I can't even believe it, but, but anyhow, our inspector is a fantastic guy. He's, he's submitting all that to the state owner of the house. So, and-
Oh, sorry. So for the other side of the road, the, the change order, they're assuming that GeoGrid, they included that already in their cost?
Yes, sir, yes. Yes. Yep. So, yeah, depending on what they get into, right? And that's all gonna get submitted to the state. We pay our, our responsibility is still 20%. Any additional cost is still 20%, um, uh, as long as we don't go outside of, as long as they approve it. As long as the state approves it, our cost is only 20% of, of, of total.
And our costs are primarily covered by the OPWC money with 325,000 there, helping cover those costs that are in public. Local match.
We, we're in good shape. Chase and I, when Chase was here, we went over it. I think Matt has done a pretty good job staying on top of, of this. But we went through, we had money to do these projects. So we didn't have, borrowed none. We didn't have, um, except for the $90,000 that was in the grant, right? That, that was in the grant that we had to pay back. Cause it was, you got, it was 325,000, I think. We, 90% of, $90,000 of it was a 0% loan, just so everybody knows. I don't wanna say, um, that came with, but because we took the 0% loan, we got $225,000 of free money. zero percent loan, we got two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of free money, so.
Ninety-seven, you technically.
Ninety-seven, okay, but I shared that with council. All right, moving on, I'm sorry, just.
You're good, you're good.
Go ahead.
Stormwater projects, uh, both stormwater projects, the one at the park, and then the one at the reservoir are almost completed, the design that is, uh, once those are completed, or actually even before that now, Mason and I are actively pursuing grants to actually construct the stormwater, uh, projects. So those will help immensely, especially with the park, once the one at the park's done, we can do a lot more, we can reorganize our main playground, and I'm looking forward to getting, uh, concrete or asphalt walkway around the pond, uh, because right now it's just all this grant money out there, so let's, let's see what, see what we find, and we'll go from there. So, uh, just looking forward to getting those projects underway. Construction problem? Oh, definitely won't begin until at least next year, but, uh, yeah, I'm looking forward to it. Uh, we're talking to you in the grant road, water tower, uh, Dora cost analysis, if you want to put the page there, this was supplied by Mason, who's been working, uh, a lot on the Dora, uh, so we need cups, two hundred and thirty dollars for approximately a thousand cups, um, and then for Dora side.
I don't have, I don't have an issue taking some of that out of, uh, for the festival, but only what we use is what we're paying for, we're not paying for anything that we don't use.
So, have you talked to the, the other entities in town, um, to see if they're interested in doing the Dora, have they confirmed, and are they interested in purchasing, purchasing the cups, like, will they contract someone under cups to say, yes, we're gonna do this?
We have had, I, I can't say they're firmly behind it, I won't, I won't go that far, uh, I will say we need to do more than diligence on that end, but, uh, from what I understand, the best practice is to sell the cups and just break even, uh, with businesses, having an agreement of any sort might discourage them from continuing with, uh, the Dora, uh, I, I'm looking out.
How are we guaranteed to recoup our money, the taxpayers' money, if we, if we do this without a contract, if they, if they're not even interested, if you haven't even talked to them to see if they're interested, you could be out two hundred and thirty plus whatever the signs are gonna cost.
I wouldn't say there's, there is no guarantee, I can guarantee.
It's to promote downtown.
It's to promote downtown, I think it's a small investment to help promote commerce downtown, I understand the concern completely, uh, but I think that, eh, eh, even just for the festivals, if you do this for the festivals even, I think that'd be an advantage, uh, for.
I don't have, probably covering the cost of what we've used it for the festival.
Yes, and we can always just have the signs up, but if no one has a cup, they can't use the Dora.
Can they purchase their own cups, I mean, like, instead of us purchasing them, can they purchase the cups, however many?
Maybe.
The entities that want to participate?
Yes, I would, I would think so, yes, even for the festival, yes.
Okay, so then we wouldn't have to purchase them.
We would be purchasing them for the beer tent.
Oh, I misspoke.
The festival would be, I know what you're talking about, you're talking about the bars and stuff.
Right, you, you purchase what you would anticipate using.
I, I misspoke, um, I guess maybe technically, yes, they could, uh, but I think the problem would be, they would have all, like, a thousand cups, and buy them bulk, if we buy them bulk and then disseminate them to the businesses, that makes, uh, for a lot easier, um, logistics.
Well, then I think the least you should do, the very least you should do is go to entities and see if they're interested in, in purchasing any cups, before we go buying a thousand of them and find out they don't have any interest in doing it.
Well, I would say, in my opinion, I would say purchase a thousand cups this year, because whatever the festival uses, they're gonna buy them, and they can buy them again next year, whatever they use, you know what I mean, so just keep them in, keep them in storage.
Yeah, but don't order like ten thousand cups.
Exactly, that's exactly what I'm doing, I mean, this whole thing is a, it's a, it's a trial and error, right, if it doesn't work out, do a regular.
We can also just wait until the actual festival.
But is, is there anywhere that we have seen a door that was established that worked successfully, I don't know.
It's hard to even, call it successful, I mean, they're, they're there, people are using them, if they're not being used, no harm, no harm.
That's exactly where I'm getting at.
It's not much of a problem, in my opinion, uh, but I mean, it brings businesses, brings business to the businesses.
And promotes.
And promotes downtown, yes, especially. Uh, I should have better answers for you by the next reading, which is scheduled for a special meeting September second, before community hall, five p.m.
But it does have to be, it does have to be, um, I don't, I don't, was you guys suggesting that the festival paid for the signs that go for the, the Dora area, because I hope that's.
What is the, I don't know.
I don't really know.
The signs.
They're, they're trying to get them.
Yeah.
We're, we're not paying for the signs, we don't, I mean, that, that's for, that's for the village, you're not bothering with Dora, right, that.
Yeah, we.
That's for the, all year round, not for, what we're paying for is what happens during the festival, just.
You guys are paying for the cups you're gonna use.
Yes, sir, any that we use, we, as much as we can get, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, that's good.
But if we went, because we had discussed only doing the Dora for the festival, and not all year round, that discussion came up?
Yes, that was discussed.
But even if we only had festival Dora, which sounds like a, a show that my children would watch, um, we would still have to have all the signage?
I think signage is a must based off of the state.
Okay.
But you could reduce the Dora to what was specifically just a tryout, which was originally, um, ask of this body was just stop at the railroad tracks to see if the thing's gonna work in the first place, and then this body said, no, push it all the way down, and, which is fine, I mean, I don't, I don't see nothing wrong with that, right, but there's gonna be some added cost for signage.
I'd like to give Boeing LA the opportunity to.
To participate, absolutely.
Absolutely, yes, I think that was basically what council also discussed. Right now, I, I mean, we can have it officially start on September second, or September third, I guess, after, you know, with the emergency vote, which we went through with, uh, but if we don't have cups for anyone, it can't actually be used, so we can just wait until September twentieth, for the festival to be our official launch date, I guess, if the Dora official, uh, if we'd like to go that route.
Right, but I was just clarifying that, even if it is just a festival, if we're just like only during the festival, we still have to purchase all the signage?
There's not a savings if you don't do it, if you don't do it right there, I see what you're, you're saying, and if we only do it once, you still gotta purchase that once, that's all, what's gonna dictate that is that, what's gonna dictate that is the size of your door, so that's how you would decrease that cost.
Mason and I went around with Mr. Stone, surveyor, and we went around, we marked where each sign will go, I think there's like twenty, twenty-eight signs we need, or twenty-four, one of the two, and we're gonna get a few extra, obviously, if we miss any of our, of future efforts.
And all of that is typically RCT, it tells you where, why your signs have to be?
Not necessarily where they have to be, it's kind of vague on that, outside of, put the signs where you don't want people to go past them with the door cup.
You have to identify your door area, it has to be specifically designed, or designated, excuse me.
And we have, I'll show a better price in the sign, there we go, better price in the signs by September second. Next one up is security cameras, uh, so I combined three different quotes, so it might, might read a little weird, so this is for additional camera outside the police department, including a monitor, uh, including, uh, multiple cameras over at the park, and including one, the two cameras at the water plants, and that's for a total of five thousand one hundred and ninety-four dollars and ninety cents.
Question?
Yes.
Water plant, is that at the park or the one out on Broadway?
That's, that's the sewer plant, that's the wastewater treatment plant, it's not the water plant.
That was my, my initial, uh, initial ask to council, maybe a month or two ago, and it's kind of morphed into this big, big quote, with multiple different departments, facilities, uh, being included. So, I go forward on this, if council allows you to also move forward, is that okay with council?
Objections?
Any objections?
No, but, I'm sorry, did you, um, say that it would be monitored, did you?
Yes, I could actually add the whole monitor too, we got a hundred and fifty-nine dollars right there, so I'll add a monitor, in addition to the next quote, uh, the police department will have an additional monitor by dispatch, uh, we, we opted for ten to eleven computers at the request of our dispatchers.
And my request?
And the mayor's request, of course, uh, and, uh, we're playing around with, we dual screen in both computers, uh, what do you put on each one, but definitely one of them will be the live feed of both, uh, obviously the police department cameras, but also, my original idea, but also our computers, to make sure that they, they're aware, basically, so that our community officers are aware. So, um, I will go forward with this quote tomorrow, uh, and again, knowing the next one, uh, this quote that you see here is not updated, there's gonna be a three next to that two, by police department PCs, we decided to, um, spend a little extra money, literally twenty bucks extra, to get a larger CD compatible, um, PC for our police department, they need them for, well, CDs, so we're gonna have three, and one of them is going to be again for the additional for dispatch, and another one's gonna be for the police chief, and I can't exactly recall which of the other three need replaced, but it's gonna be one of those three, three that you're getting, to integrate that one. So, uh, is there any objections to the police department going forward, well, not, this one.
The police, that's eleven computers.
Three of them from the police department, the eleven total, most of it the office, uh, going forward, we, I believe this is a, a must-do, uh, because of Microsoft's October deadline, uh, phasing out technology, basically, and making us pay, which is irritating, but we live in those parameters, fortunately, and if we want to stay, uh.
So, does that come out of each, um, department's budget, or how does that, like, out of, or that?
Yeah, I've already looked into, you know, I looked over, like, each computer, is there any of them that we could not purchase, and it'd come back to, we needed all ten, which is now eleven, I talked to Intech about it, like, we really felt it was necessary, and they were like, absolutely, yeah, there are no, no doubt, because of this security, is, to be honest, at first I was a little like, I don't need new computer, but, you know, off the information, and it's like, no, I really, I do need a new computer.
It's time we give ransomware, give ransom, or wish we spent the eight thousand dollars to me.
Yes.
It's not even, it's a small price.
So I'm gonna go forward with this, uh, which is a blessing, and while we're on the topic of cybersecurity, um, I have had a meeting with our insurance and with Intech, uh, we do one every year, apparently, to go through, make sure that we are compliant, not just to have to do other things to make sure we're safe, which is the reason why we changed our password to the wifi here, recently, lots of many other reasons, what's going on, what's going on, but basically.
Password?
Uh, we are going through the assessment and then additional training at the office level, and I'll be spreading that to other departments, including yourselves, uh, additional cybersecurity training, uh, and then we're also probably going to up our, uh, we call that, our spam blocker, our security blockers, security, cybersecurity software, basically, uh, that's embedded in our, we'll, and all that too, so a lot of things are happening behind the scenes when it comes to making, uh, the village safer, uh, we also have to obey, I found a, I had a meeting today with Jean from Intech, basically, uh, that there's a new House bill that passed, that we have a lot of, basically mandates, that we have to have this and that policy, so expect policies to be coming up for council approval, probably as soon as even next month, uh, so.
Keep moving on.
Okay, uh, T-Mobile agreement, I had a meeting today with Greg, uh, who represents a company who is contracted out by T-Mobile, basically, I copied, I have a spreadsheet, actually, um, we cleared up a few things, that makes things a lot simpler now, uh, and he's, uh, much, uh, we're on the same page, basically, I'm trying to say, uh, so instead of my initial offer, which was basically, doesn't make sense anymore, uh, you have the green here on the right, uh, which is going to be the new offer, uh, which is going to T-Mobile with, to see if that is, um, well, good enough, basically.
What, what happened, they sent us a proposal, and we countered them with the, with the offer from CIA, they're trying to, what were we doing?
I misread, I misread the offer, uh, and I, I made a mistake on that end, so I corrected it, and the offer that I was supposed to make has been made now, uh, and we'll see if that actually expires accurately, I mean, it's a small bump from the, the current offer, again, green is our offer, instead of twelve percent, it's fifteen percent every five years, and then instead of, uh, three thousand three hundred and four dollars, it's gonna be three thousand five hundred dollars, uh, beginning in April of twenty thirty.
That's what you're proposing to them?
Yes, yes, we'll see if that is, and I'm gonna stake in my, in this, what you're reading, please let me know immediately, uh, in the middle, give that to them.
Well, they're already currently paying us, correct?
Yes, sir.
So don't.
But that agreement, which was signed in two thousand five, it's set to expire in.
And they sent us something, and you're saying that that, okay, there was a mistake.
There was a mistake.
Well, I sure hope we don't lose that revenue.
Yeah, oh, we're both, we're both, we have a lot better communication now, regarding what's going on, and I, I'm fairly certain we will not lose that revenue.
Good.
So, moving forward, where is my, there it is, okay, upcoming meetings and events, uh, this Wednesday, August thirteenth, at five p.m., we are doing a transportation focus group hosted by GL Cap, in, well, this room, public is encouraged to attend, I do have sheets right here, I also have a couple copies over the front, too. So basically, at five p.m., they're gonna come in, lead the actual focus group of the residents of North Baltimore, and it's, I've got a, I'll put a quote there, uh, do you live in, you're in Baltimore, so join us for a small government conversation about transportation in rural Wood County, we're gathering input on transportation challenges and ideas to improve access to where you need to go, so it's, it's pretty simple, again, I definitely encourage all residents to attend, if, if able, uh, to share their inputs, and I will be there also, uh, taking notes, and, um, we can all work together on making North Baltimore a better place for all residents to contribute to transportation.
Thank you.
The next up, uh, Thursday, September fourth, at nine a.m., I am going to do a bicycle audit of North Baltimore neighborhoods, this is in regards to the Wood County Health Department and the grant that they have, they, they're using Tool Design, who's leading this bike audit, unfortunately, it's not open to the public at this time, due to limited space, only so many bikes, uh, best practice to be on a bike audit, for safety reasons especially, uh, I do, I would like if anyone in council rides a bike, uh, to join us if possible, again, this is nine a.m., Thursday, September.
Who's that, Will?
This is with, uh, Wood County Health Department, and with Tool Design, uh, they have contracted out through their grant, uh, this is the same, it's a bicycle, it's a bicycle audit, but I know a couple weeks ago, last month, we did a walking audit, it was the same people.
Okay.
And then, uh, last thing I have here is for the all-events permanent application, which you see at the very back of my packet here, this was submitted by residents, residents, Eric Patterson, who, who's gonna phrase that, uh, and, uh, since he's in the audience right now, uh, he can.
Yeah, um, look into the past, I mean, you can read it, uh, the event's location from Main Street to Cherry, Water, to Broad, it's the same as we've always done in the past, is what we're looking for, um, but we, we do wanna make sure that everybody knows, like, in the past, we allowed them to set up on Friday nights, we'd be walking them to, we'd be shutting down so that they'd come in on Friday nights and set up like we've always done, for anybody, this is, uh, it's, uh, moving slow, but, uh, hopefully we can, we can, uh, get something started again, I think, and I think we will. This year is, we're not trying to do anything difficult, just trying to, just trying to, uh, to get it started, and keep it, keep it as simple as possible, um, for this year, especially since our five oh one C three has not come through yet, so that's really into this.
I understand, you agree with council on this, or you?
Yes, they have to, yes, council has to approve this.
So is there?
Well, it is September twentieth, twenty twenty-five, um, it'll be from eight a.m. to nine p.m. at night is what we're asking for, um, but again, uh, please give us a little bit of, because I didn't, I didn't put it there Friday, because what the police department usually does is goes around about noon, one o'clock, and starts putting up the no parking signs, right, so, um, usually whenever, I don't know when they roll in, this is my first time trying to get a handle on this, so, people start rolling in, let them set up, just like we did when we were younger, I think, and, uh, so, it, as I said, it's just a feeling out, um, is there any questions about any of this?
The only question I have is with your, um, food setup?
Yeah.
As far as the, the water, as far as like what they're doing with their.
Yeah, at this point, Brian Robert said that it was fine, they dumped it down the, Yeah, at this point, Brian Robert said that it was fine that they don't get down the, yes. He said it is not, just as long as it's only gray water. As long as it's only gray water, he said, yeah, that's exactly what he told me.
I want to check the EPA.
Cause he said it does not put us out of compliance with what, what we are allowed. Just the gray water, meaning the stuff that you wash your hands and stuff.
I know what gray water is, but I've been to a lot of festivals and people will pull out there.
Okay.
So please check on that.
Sure will. Um.
I'll make the motion.
One thing, one second, I wanna, go ahead.
No, no, I'm sorry.
One thing that I am gonna ask this body, and I'm not asking for it like right now, but, um, so for the food vendors, they need two twenty. We've only got one ten out here.
How'd we do in the past?
I don't know. Do you know how we get it in the past?
There's two boxes on.
There's one here and one across the street. All those are one ten. So did they just, go ahead.
No, you plug.
They just tie into that?
Yes.
Okay, so.
There's breakers in there.
We're looking, only had like six people set up this year at the most, right? We wanna keep it simple and then allow this thing to grow. But what's that?
So that.
They, they, they can tie into that.
Tie into for six people.
Okay. On both sides of the roads, right? Then there's one ten out there. But I, I'm gonna ask this body to maybe budget for twenty twenty-six, to have maybe loans or somebody come in, get some quotes to come in there, because we could probably get some down on the other end of the.
That's what always kept us from having food right there is because we didn't have the electric to support it.
So at least try to figure out what we wanna do in the future and almost set up for it for, for twenty twenty-six if this thing takes off. And it will help with everything we do. And we can, you don't just have to have one festival and one parade. We can add multiple parades is what I wanna try to do eventually and, and more than one festival. Not necessarily a festival, but certain things that we can do downtown. We're gonna need additional power down towards our parking lot, I would say.
Yeah.
So I would just ask, I don't know what the cost of anything like that would be. I thought about maybe getting more, maybe loans, electric and maybe two others and get quotes for twenty twenty-six. So this year we'll just have to try to make do with what we have.
Yeah.
And then, um. Alright, so I'm sorry.
I'll make the motion to approve this permit.
I have a question.
Yes.
Um, where it says liquor permit attached and it says you don't, it's not applicable, but you keep talking about a beer tent.
It's not applicable to us because we're not doing it. It would be the Eagles would be doing it. So they're the ones that peer the liquor permit.
Okay.
That all goes through the Eagles. So because we don't have our five oh one C three, we had to reach out to people that have their five oh one C threes that are kind of jumping in to help us to make this year successful. So all proceeds of everything, we, we're not even gonna take a dime in because we don't want anything to be, the way that, we, we don't, until we get a five oh one C three, we can't get all of our stuff set. So, um, so with that being said, um, we reached out to some of the five oh one C threes within the community and they said they need to take care of the beer tent and all that. They will get all revenues from it, whatever that would be. And then, but we have nothing to do with it as far as the village or the, the festival committee. So that's just through them. Is that?
And the festival committee is gonna make sure they have that permit?
Oh, absolutely. They may already have it. Oh, absolutely. I've been, I mean, conversation, we're gonna be sitting down and putting that all together, yep.
And you, you've got your vendors that are coming in, they have their insurance.
We're gonna be checking on that, yes. So there's a motion, there's a second? Vote when ready, please.
Mr. Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. Engard.
Yes.
Mr. Swett.
Yes.
Ms. Bokr.
Yeah.
Mr. Richmond.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Say, hold it to the head.
Yes, sir.
Any questions for the administrator?
I have a couple. And we.
Come on, figure me.
I had, uh.
Have we heard anything of our caboose buyer?
Yes, it was removed on Saturday.
Yeah. It's gone.
It's gone. I gotta reach out to, well, I'm gonna ask council first. They don't wanna take the tracks. I'm not sure it was in the agreement when they first bought the caboose, but they don't take the tracks. Apparently they're very, very heavy. So about eighty.
We could cut and get them out of there if you got it. It was welded to them. So they must've just cut the welds and they got that out. If you guys want them gone, I can take the grade off down there, see if I can get a cutting torch from the, from work, lift them up, cut them, get them out of there. Or you guys could pay to get it done, whatever you guys want.
Make it disappear.
Make it disappear. Yeah, it's not gonna happen anytime like in the next week or so. I've got more on my plate.
I mean, I.
I think it's something like that.
I'll get you a piece if you want a piece.
Council reach out to like recycling nearby, if you'll be interested in taking them.
Okay.
Yep, I, I.
I would, Paula, I want a piece.
Okay.
I would.
What?
Chief of Order wants a piece. What do you want for?
Yes, same thing.
Same thing?
Yeah, I'll take care of it.
Seriously though, we're just gonna have the mayor take care of it?
Yeah, I'll just take care of it.
Okay.
It's done deal. So we're not talking about this.
Thank you. We will remove the, uh, the rail and then Josh Long will, uh, remove any, you know, additional gravel and then we'll get rest there, basically. Next question.
That was, I, that was it?
All right. Excuse me, may I ask one suggestion?
Please.
Perhaps a motion and to declare that of no value.
Right, so there's no, like, are you saying get, what is that, what do you mean?
Council declares that the, those ties to have no value or are not used for public purpose, then the council will not face any questions later about giving rid of assets to the village. There has to be a declaration. It's of no use and it has no value.
So you're saying they just make that.
Motion second.
Yeah, there's, but there's no value to it, it gets all done. Right, I don't know if that's what you're getting, that it's all done.
It doesn't matter.
Okay.
I'll make motion that the railroad tracks in the park have no value and that mayor will remove those for us.
You want a piece of it? You want a piece of it?
Please.
There's a motion on the floor that there's no value and what was the other one? Mr. Scaff?
Any other? That, that it's of no use to.
No use and no value.
And no use to, um, Philip.
I'll second that.
There's a motion in the second, vote when ready, please.
I'm gonna write my note. Okay, uh, Mr. Engard.
No use and no value.
Mr. Swett.
Yes.
Ms. Bokr again. Mr. Richmond.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Ms. Hefner.
Yes.
If anybody else wants a piece of it, let me know.
I'll take one.
Do you want a piece of it? Bring your truck down.
Why don't we, uh, give it to Paul, we're so ready to get down there. Any more questions before I move?
Okay, moving on. Any questions, okay. Moving on to the clerk. Becky, anything tonight?
I have nothing.
Thank you very much. Moving on to point of legal counsel, Mr. Scaff.
Nothing, thank you.
Nothing, by, any questions for Mr. Scaff? Moving on to the mayor. The only thing that I've got, I would also like council to consider for next year, a PA system for downtown. The one that we're gonna use this year, I think we got a quote that we're gonna pay like twelve hundred bucks, I think. And it's only temporary, it's for that day. But maybe a downtown, it would help with like any, um, like are we afraid if somebody wanted to sit there and announce as they go by? I just think it would be a good addition for a permanent. It'd be almost like, uh, I envision it almost something, you know? Four, four to six speakers that are, um, exterior speakers and then, and then like some, like a microphone that we could pull out that we're picking up and then we could set up a table if somebody wanted to announce stuff that was going on downtown.
They used to announce the parade.
They used to, yes, I remember that. So I would ask that you guys would consider that maybe in twenty twenty-six also with some. I don't know what the cost of that would be. We can probably.
Is it something that, um, I understand, if I understood right, you're not charging your food vendors?
Nothing, nobody, yeah, nobody's getting charged.
What about next year if you have and you can expand that? Is that something that you could put some of that money towards the electric or the PA system?
So we will, so we, we will start drawing revenue until next, the actual festival next year. Right, so it's gonna be, you know, it'd be like this time next year when people start. By that time, you get a PA system put in, it's gonna be probably.
Oh, we wanna do it sooner than that. We wanna do it wait.
That's what I'm getting at. So.
Play Christmas music in the winter.
Yeah, there's a lot of things we can do with that. Actually, there's a lot of things we can do with something like that for the town in the, in the winter. Or all year round.
For antique shopping, that would be great. Get a lot of people downtown.
So.
Has anyone walked downtown Findlay, Findlay with the system that they put in when they redid their roads downtown? They have, they have like a, a Muzak system that plays over the speakers all during the day.
Music system?
It's, it's called Muzak. It's like a service that plays the music, but they have speakers built into the light poles downtown. So it plays.
Love's Comedy has something like that.
Yeah, like all day long. So I'm assuming that you could tie into something like that.
Oh, wow.
You might wanna look at.
Especially in the winter.
Yeah.
Looking at it.
Yeah, so when they redid their.
Summer.
Main Street.
Yeah.
Made it really nice.
Yeah, so, so.
That's why I'm like when you walk downtown for lunch and stuff, there's music playing all the time.
That's awesome. So probably when they purchased the pole, the poles came with it or do you think it was in it?
I don't know, I don't know. I could ask.
Please do.
I'll ask some people down there and see where they, who did it, who designed it, that stuff.
Thank you.
While you're there, they have a door, right?
Yeah.
Enjoy the door too while you're checking out the music.
Yeah, man.
But that would actually, that would actually enhance the door, to be honest with you.
Well, I think we need to look at that as part of our downtown.
Rejuvenation.
Main Street, street sidewalks, light poles, upgraded electric, music.
Full night, full night.
Do it, do it all at once, cause if you piece it together, I think it's gonna end up costing more.
Of course.
So let's try to, you know, what was the plan to?
We put it together as a project.
Yeah, that's right.
Yes.
Yeah, do it all at once kinda play.
Okay.
Josh, you coming on, come to lunch for me someday, Findlay. Look at it.
After hours, right?
Because I've already talked about the application, um, the door a little bit. And then Bill, you know about, um, if you guys do get the car show, there's no registration fees. We cannot take money in this year.
Right. I'm making that clear to the ones I'm talking to.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for.
Is there any questions for me? Okay, moving on, standing committee's economic and community development, Mr. Cook.
Might toss this over to Mason that I took your advice when I went down to that, that nice little antique shop. Second or third time in there.
I know.
The one that's across from the old Chinese restaurant. Sorry, I'm.
There's two of them.
Yeah.
Garden aquarium and a loion of oil.
The town we lived in in Westford, Indiana.
Iron.
Went to the grand opening, I thought it was iron.
I can't read. Anyway.
Anyway, the town we lived in in Westford, Indiana, they had a sign out on the highway because they were right on the highway like we are. We're on seventy-five, they were on seventy-four. But they had a few antique shops and they just advertised it. And I tell you, it brought, it brought business to the downtown. They, they were same distance, same distance from the highway, so a lot of that.
So promoting.
Promoting. For Ms. Bokr's request, if we're talking, we're talking about that building on eighteen, that concept, it might need a special committee meeting, just to, or maybe we do a meeting of all to talk about that. Cause I know they have, I'm in mind what they wanna use the building for, Josh and them do, but. Please say.
Do we wanna go into discussion during your hand committee?
Sure.
Okay.
Anything else, Mr. Bill?
That's all I had.
Moving on, public safety, Dee?
I have nothing.
Any questions for Dee? Public Works, Paula? What's that?
The Public Works Building. After more discussion with both Josh Long and Paula, uh, we've come to understanding that maybe we should put the Public Works Building over by the reservoir. I know it's been discussed previously. I have been persuaded that it doesn't need necessarily be in the park and that there's enough of work in the cemetery there, that doing so would actually be a benefit too. So I think we should go forward in the property we already own out there by the reservoir. Like I said, just west between the cemetery and the existing parking lot there. And, uh, yeah, put a Public Works Building there, basically. So I'm just gonna make some slow headway.
Right.
Between the existing park.
Tongue.
The Tongue property. They used to be a house, I believe, yeah.
Did you talk to Brian about that?
Yes, he.
Yeah, Brian offered.
I've talked to him about it.
Yeah, he's all, he's, he's.
I've talked to him about it.
So going forward, that's what we're thinking. Is there any more discussion from council?
Yeah, quick question. Do, do we legally need to do anything with the transfer of that?
We would.
Property?
Absolutely.
Yeah, when it comes to.
Yeah, you can't just use water, yeah, that's water.
Okay.
Water can't even, water can't even mix with wastewater. Wastewater can't mix with water and you gotta be very, very careful.
Yeah, got it.
Yeah, we definitely.
According to Audrey's website, this is village of Baltimore, I believe. So I'll, I'll see what that looks like and maybe we'll set it up.
That's what I recall. Is that they're all listed in the village of North Baltimore?
Yeah.
I'm just letting you know, I was on council and they paid for that with water money, with utilities money. I know that for a fact. And it's paid for and Andy Patterson bought it.
Same as I was opening up on twenty-five. So we'll make sure we don't break.
Is it connected with the reservoir? It would have to be split off anyhow, wouldn't it?
It's already a separate parcel.
Is it?
It might, we might have to do some parcel configuration, but it might be, this building might be bigger than that, that parcel can hold.
I believe that they purchased it. You'd have to go back and look at the minutes, I think it purchased this. If somebody else didn't purchase it, put something there by the reservoirs that we get more. I'm almost positive that's what the conversation was, but that was a long time ago.
So is council okay with me going forward as, as so with this property?
And incorporate the, that's what I was just mentioning, the conversations we had before because we looked at what we'd like to have this in that building and that, this building in that building and the other thing.
You've got basement limit, all of that. That basement limits.
But we could probably, we could probably take some of that parking lot. I'm sure if you could incorporate that, that's very little of that's being used.
It's okay with.
You have to have the conversation, right?
Yes. Okay. Any else, Paula?
Anything's on?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, moving, any other questions for Public Works? Public Utilities? I don't know why, uh, can you?
My bad.
That's okay.
I got it.
She left me all together this time. I was wondering if there's something.
Yours.
But no, uh, nothing, we've already discussed the utilities stuff, the water.
Any questions for Mr. Swett? You know, finance, technology, too?
I'm pretty sure we already had the discussion of computers, so.
Perfect. Any questions for finance and technology? Did you have anything else? Anything to finance, technology, moving on? Personal policy, or a review, Dave?
Uh, so have we decided, do we wanna go ahead and go with for the Wildcats?
It's, there's an ordinance for you guys to approve or not of, of a resolution, excuse me, so you guys make that. me, so you guys make that.
That is, resolution number twenty-one.
Unless you're trying to have that conversation now.
No, I'm not, I'm just trying to get it off, that we've talked about it so much.
But there's a resolution, you'll figure it out tonight, that's one way to go. You guys have supported it or not supported it?
That's, that's really all I got, as far as the eighteen pro- uh, property for the Public Works Building, you know, biggest thing, my whole biggest thing was to get emergency services on the south side of tracks. So if we could find some way to incorporate that.
Of course.
That would be amazing. But that's all I wanted to say about that.
So you're suggesting a possible public works with some days for ours?
Right. Would like to have a fire truck over there, would like to have a, an ambulance over there, and, and a stop for the police too, if they're, you know what I mean, an office or whatever.
Yeah.
So I think it would be great to have that presence on that side of town, just to help make the residents feel.
It's been on the, it's been on the discussions and CSS, so that's getting something on the south side.
Time, time to handle it.
Hopefully. All right. Any questions for personal policy or a review? Moving on, new legislation, resolution motion to business, resolution number nineteen, twenty twenty-five, resolution supporting the Village of North Baltimore, at, the Village of North Baltimore, we need to.
Village of North application.
Yeah, yep, sorry.
North Baltimore application to the Toledo Metropolitan Area Council of Governments, TECOG, transportation improvement program, or the TIC program, for the purposes, for the purpose of obtained financial assistance for transportation and construction projects. Would you guys like to move on?
Uh, do you need a motion? We need a motion to suspend.
Suspend the second, third reading, we want it to go as an emergency.
Uh, resolution nineteen dash twenty twenty-five.
There's a motion to suspend the second, third readings? What's the purpose of the emergency?
Uh, this needs to be done, I was talking about committee of the hall, I know council's aware, uh, basically you have to get it done in order to, uh, be, adhere to the TECOG guidelines with submitting, uh, they want a resolu- or a resolution done and, uh, now basically.
Right, so they, in order to move forward with this request, we have to have this resolution passed and showed them that we're supportive of the legislative authority, got it?
Yes.
Yep, that's fine. There's a motion, a second, any other questions? Vote when ready, please.
Mr. Sweat?
Yes.
Ms. Boprey?
Yeah.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Ms. Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Engard?
Yes.
Needs to be a motion to put a motion to adopt as an emergency.
I'll, I'll make that motion.
There's a motion by Dave to adopt as an emergency?
Second.
A second? Any other discussion? Vote when ready.
Ms. Boprey?
Yeah.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Ms. Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Engard?
Yes.
Mr. Sweat?
Yes.
Moving on, resolution number twenty twenty-five, a resolution authorizing village finance officer entered, entering to a service agreement with Baldwin Group for Mayor's Corp Software.
Make a motion to suspend the second, third reading.
There's a motion on the floor to suspend the second and third reading? There's a second, what's the purpose of the emergency?
Uh, we've been looking for Mayor's Corp Software for, for extended period of time, but we've really figured out more of what we need recently, even more as of today, uh, to make it, one of the main benefits of emergency is, uh, Baldwin's gonna charge four thousand to import our information from CMI and, that's a quote.
Yeah.
And CMI was, their quote was eight thousand.
Oh.
We, we are going to not move forward with either one of those. By this being an emergency, we can get on Baldwin quicker, because CMI ends at the end of this year, and then we're gonna import that data in-house.
Okay.
So, so, so the main reason for the emergency is just, once, if it gets passed, then we can get Baldwin started a little sooner, so we can start getting that information.
So you're saying that you're gonna get all this, all this, get the service agreement set up, and then you guys in-house can handle?
We, we had a, we, talking with April to be honest, like Mayor's Corp's not my thing, because I don't do it on a daily basis, so, uh, we've been kicking that idea around for probably two weeks, just trying to see if there's any reason why, you know, that we couldn't do it, or it didn't make sense, but our call today with, uh, actually Amy's the owner of Baldwin, and she was like, yeah, some, it does make sense, it's, there's work involved, and there's other entities that have done this.
So we can do it.
With a lighter caseload, uh, you know, as far as, because of bringing that information over, but me, I was really leaning on April, because she knows how, you know, that, do you really think, this is too much, can we really do it? Uh, you know, at the end of the day, obviously we're gonna know what we have, and then there's gonna be that cost savings, but the hesitation would be is, you know, can we handle that workload?
In that amount of time, that's my concern, and you guys are confident that you can, okay? All right, so that's, so to save some money is the purpose of, okay, there's a motion, there's a second, vote when ready, please.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Ms. Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Engard?
Yes.
Mr. Sweat?
Yes.
Ms. Boprey?
Yeah. I need to get a motion that we declare an emergency?
There's a motion to adopt it as an emergency?
Second.
Any other discussion? Vote when ready.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Ms. Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Engard?
Yes.
Mr. Sweat?
Yes.
Ms. Boprey?
Yeah.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
Resolution number twenty-one, twenty twenty-five, a resolution authorizing village administrator entering to a trap, new to return TNR program agreement with, for the love of cats, for the management of feral cat population in the Village of North Baltimore, approving set agreement as exhibited.
I need a motion that we wait for second and third reading?
Second. There's a second, there's a motion, and a second is to suspend the second, third reading, what's the need for the emergency, this has been a.
There's a lot of cats.
Because there's just gonna be more cats, but longer we wait.
Yeah, we wanna get them rolling as possible, it might be until later this month.
It's not an emergency, we, we've ignored it for thirty years, it's not, there's a motion in the second?
Well, I, I wanna bring out, I mean, as in the emergencies, I mean, I remember being at a council training, and one of the lawyers was telling me not, we should, you shouldn't live off of emergencies.
That's exactly.
Bypassing public, but, pretty much, so.
We did have a public meeting, and we talked about multiple, multiple council meetings.
Yeah, and just, you know, I, I feel the same thing, we're, we've got a lot of emergencies for, I mean, what we should.
Give the public an opportunity when they're on there and in there, to, to come up and, and have their say, and if they choose not to, with those three means, if it's not a true emergency, if it's a true emergency, I think we should, but as, I mean, I was in the same training, and they said, we should not get in the habit of, of passing everything as, you know, as an emergency, just for the sake of passage, just for the convenience of it. We need to give the citizens an opportunity, if they choose not to, that's their right.
We have gave the citizens an opportunity, although they've, they, we've had them guys.
I just see a trend here, that's all I'm saying.
The three readings is, is the opportunity, when it's not a true and real, what's the true and real emergency? I mean, if there was a true and real emergency, we'd have dealt with it ten years ago, we'd have dealt with it, the community, right, the true, I, I mean, I think we're just getting to saying it's, everything's an emergency, right, that's all, just, caution us to be careful.
I understand, I understand.
We, we serve the public, we need to, you know, three more readings of something that's not a true emergency, I don't think, we, it's not gonna make a break.
And we're having a special meeting that can go on in September, correct? And we're having a regular meeting, is that correct? Didn't you say we're having a special meeting?
Yes, September second.
So we have the three readings by the first of September, so.
Well, yeah, this is one, yeah, by September, but there's a motion, and there's a second, is there any other discussion?
Yes.
Please.
You have a opinion on this?
With the same opinion. Shouldn't be an emergency unless it's true and truly an emergency. But that's up to the council to decide.
Thank you. If I just, one more, I think we just get so used to passing them as emergencies, that they're not true emergencies, guys, we've got true emergencies, right? We're just getting in that habit, that's all, we just, we, we still can't forget that we, we wanna do our due diligence, that somebody come up here and say, I wanted to have a motor or a sail on that, and we, we thought we're passing it as an emergency, take all excuses away from it, so, yep, thank you very much. Vote when ready, please.
Ms. Hefner?
No.
Mr. Engard?
No.
Mr. Sweat?
No.
Ms. Boprey?
Yeah.
Mr. Richmond?
No.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Thank you very much, um, moving on, it didn't pass, so there will be a second reading on it. Thank you very much for your consideration. Resolution number twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-five, a resolution authorizing the mayor to proceed with purchase of police communications equipment from Bender Communications, based on June twenty-five, twenty twenty-five quote, approving safe quote as exhibited. Um, the reason for the emergency would be for cost savings.
You say Bender Communications?
Oh, excuse me, it would be.
Railcom.
Oh, railcom, I got the wrong one, please forgive me.
I have to reread that, it was eight and a half, I think.
Yeah, I got it.
That's what.
I got them both together.
I was on the wrong page with you.
It's all right, I got them both together. I wasn't sure which one we was gonna go with, right here, so, before I move on and I apologize, um, do we know what, are we, because I'm gonna read whichever one this body wants to go with, do we wanna go with the, the top of the water tower with Bender Communications, or are we looking to go with the police repeaters?
We look for repeaters.
Within the, in the vehicles, okay, I'm gonna read that.
Correct?
Yes.
Resolution number twenty-two, twenty twenty-five, a resolution authorizing the mayor to proceed with the purchase of police communications equipment from Bender Communications, gosh darn it, there it is again.
Now, this was.
Excuse me, a resolution authorizing the mayor to proceed with the purchase of police communications equipment from Railcom Communications LLC based on the August sixth, twenty twenty-five, quote, so we just got that, um, and approving safe quote as exhibit A.
Now, we need to suspend the first and second reading.
If you wanna pass it as an emergency, yes, you have to, I can't make that.
I'm making that motion.
There's a motion to, in that.
How long is it, quote, they're for?
How long's quote they're for? Uh, thirty days. Oh, yeah, I have one on, I'm not sure, well, here it is. What does it say? I don't see it on there. It says thirty days, but I, I don't see that on there.
And have we asked Bender for a revised quote?
It'll be a brand new quote, because it's a separate thing, if we wanna go with police repeaters.
So I'm gonna move on, there's not, did you make a motion?
Yes.
There was a motion to suspend the second, third reading, was there a second to that? No, does anybody wanna second? If not, that motion's gonna die.
I'll second it.
There's a second, to suspend the second, third reading, is there any discussion?
So this would, uh, you want it to take place in September?
It could, yes. I would suggest that it does get passed as an emergency, um, when you, if you wait till September, because then it goes on, into automatic effect, and we can, am I right in saying that, or?
Yes.
Because you don't wanna wait thirty days, if you have all three readings on it, if you have all three readings on it, you gotta wait thirty days before you can act on it. If you pass it as an emergency, it goes into effect immediately. So.
This motion's actually an emergency.
Our radios do not work. We cannot call for help, I mean, that's.
It's a fact.
Can't be clearer than that.
Yeah.
This was an emergency a year ago, when I talked to you guys about it.
It's been an emergency for a long time, unfortunately, it was, it was fixed, um, so it is a real true and emergency because of the safety, first of all, we're gonna save eight thousand dollars, that's about the emergency, emergency is the safety of our police officers out there.
And our citizens.
Yeah, we can't keep our police safe, can't keep our citizens safe, there's, there's a motion for it, there's a second, vote when ready, please.
Mr. Engard?
Yes.
Mr. Sweat?
Yes.
Ms. Boprey?
Yeah.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Ms. Hefner?
Yes.
You have a motion to adopt as an emergency, if anybody would make.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any other discussion on this issue? Vote when ready.
Mr. Sweat?
Yes.
Ms. Boprey?
Yeah.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Ms. Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Engard?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash twenty, an ordinance vacating a portion of the unapproved right-of-way known as Oak Street. Situated in the Village of North Baltimore, Wood County, Ohio, and conveying said vacated portion to Leslie Lequins and Richard A. and Mary E. Capel. Humpton Mary Pass.
Yeah, but it's still on.
It's still on, okay, that's fine, yep, perfect, perfect.
It's more, just made it safe.
Perfect, I, I like where you're at. Uh, moving on, ordinance twenty, number twenty twenty-five dash twenty-one, ordinance authorizing certification of delinquent utility, add a special assessment to the Wood County Auditor. Yep, you can interject.
That, I made a mistake there, I, I actually do not wanna declare that an emergency, so.
That's fine.
Uh, just so, to make it clear now, I, even in the email I had, the fact of it being in the next regular meeting.
Perfect, so we can move on, I had the first reading on it, I just wrapped, so, moving on. Ordinance, moving on, ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash twenty-two, an ordinance authorizing certification of grass mowing as a special assessment to the Wood County Auditor.
That'd be insane.
Okay, we don't need that to be an emergency, thank you very much, moving on, um, so what, what do we do with that, we just increase the, the rates on that, is that what I understand with specials?
Yeah, I mean, that's not part of this.
Okay, that's all you know.
This is just for anything that's been moved since like the end of last year, the assessments on property, other taxes.
So we've got plenty of time to get it over there, right, because there's deadlines.
Beginning of September, so I have to have it by the next meeting.
Perfect.
Probably be two readings, maybe three, if we use the special meeting.
It'll be an emergency at some time.
Yeah, we, we are gonna have to pass it as an emergency though, at some point, let's just make sure that we, when we pass, we pass these as emergencies, something like. Moving on, ordinance number two, thank you, uh, ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash twenty-three, an ordinance enacting a special assessment for the cost and expense of cleaning the streets, alleyways, and other public places in the Village of North Baltimore, twenty twenty-five, authorizing certification, same to the Wood County Auditor. Uh, these are the special assessments that are on everybody's property, build, the street cleaning, the street, uh, the street cleaning, the street lighting, and the tree trimming and maintenance, so that's what you're gonna see coming up. Moving on, ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash twenty-four, an ordinance enacting a special assessment for the cost and expense of lighting of the streets, alleyways, and other public places in the Village of North Baltimore, twenty twenty-five, authorized certification, same to the Wood County Auditor. We go to ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash twenty-five, an ordinance enacting a special assessment for the cost and expense of trimming, maintaining, and cleaning of trees along the streets, alleyways, and other public places in the Village of North Baltimore, twenty twenty-five, authorized certification, same to the Wood County Auditor. Moving on, ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash twenty-six, an ordinance approving transfer of funds appropriated for the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Moving on, ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash twenty-seven, an ordinance approving supplemental appropriations for the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, do you want that as an emergency, Matt?
Yes.
Okay. Can I get a motion to suspend the second, third reading?
This is on eighteen dash twenty twenty-five.
This is on twenty twenty-five dash twenty-seven, first reading, this is a transfer, uh, excuse me, to approve the supplemental appropriations for the fiscal year.
Do I make that motion?
Second.
So there's appropriations that are being made for this year. There's a motion to suspend the second, third reading, was there a motion and a second?
Yes.
Any other discussion? Vote when ready.
Ms. Boprey?
Yeah.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Ms. Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Durk?
Yes.
Mr. Sweat?
Yes. Big motion, we pass as an emergency.
There's a motion to approve as an emergency?
Second.
And there's a motion and a second, any discussion, what, what's, what's, what's And, there's a motion, a second, any discussion, what's, what's, what's the appropriation for that?
Uh, the exhibition sheet would show, uh, medic, I have it in front of me, so I, that's the part 25 dash 27, general funds for the Parks Department for insurance.
Okay, so this is an increase for our insurance, one of our insurance rates increase?
There just wasn't enough appropriated.
I got you, it's a couple of the increase.
Yeah, the other one's increased appropriation to cover your end transfers, so the actual transfer will be for the EMS, it'll be to help cover that, but that's going to go through three readings, but the money will be there for that transfer. The next one was, April was paid a bonus for covering for the utility clerk and that come out of the mayor discretion fund, so that's transferred over to his personnel services with equal wages. The next one's appropriation to cover the cost, half of the cost for the love of cats, which it'll just be available if that, if and when that is passed, so preparation for that, the next two was Parks and Recreation.
That's insurance.
And the two, the next two are insured because it gets distributed out amongst different funds, so if any of you didn't receive this exhibition, I can email it.
Thank you very much, any questions? There's a motion and a second to adopt as an emergency, vote when ready please.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Ms. Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Engard?
Yes.
Mr. Swett?
Yes.
Ms. Goprae?
Yeah.
We're going to, second reading, resolution number 18, 2025, a resolution amending section 4 dash 04, work schedules and time law, formerly titled work scheduling of the village of North Baltimore, personnel policy manual, clarifying modernized policies regarding work scheduled rest of meal periods, flex time, and compensatory time. I'd still like to ask this body, what was wrong with the old language, does anybody got? Does anybody know what was wrong with the old language?
We just updated it, that's all, we just updated it, we went over everything and we went over your key signs as well, and we just updated it.
Moving on, ordinance number 2025 dash 15, an ordinance authorizing the village administrator to purchase property owned by Nomad Properties LLC, Tony and Laura Damon, that's the second reading, moving on.
I have a question on that one, we can go on to the third reading until we make a motion, just strike it at this point.
We either do.
Strike, what does, what does strike mean? What does strike mean?
We just get rid of it. Get rid of it.
Oh, get rid of it, thank you, I didn't know, thank you. Third, moving on, did you have anything else you wanted to?
No, that's what, the answer, it was an answer.
Ordinance 2025 dash 16, an ordinance repealing section 513 dash 16 of the confined orders of the village of North Baltimore, Ohio, related to adult use cannabis operators, I think, Mr. Scaff, did you not send out an email concerning this?
I'm not, yeah, he did at one time, this is to repeal the existing prohibition, even though, the way I interpret it, because we don't have adult cannabis operators clearly defined in our existing code of use, it's already prohibited, but we, in order to go forward with the planning commission, planning commission schedule as given to me by Mr. Scaff, we have to first repeal the existing prohibition.
So you have to repeal this to go to the planning commission to, okay. So, I think I asked a question, I don't remember what the answer was, what changed from last year to this year?
In regards to?
When, when this body?
Well, it wasn't, it wasn't fully this body, and I just think we're doing a huge disservice by taking advantage of that tax money.
So, okay, I just want to make sure that I understand this, this, well, wait until, let's see if it passes, then I'll ask the questions. Okay, moving on, ordinance 2025 dash 18, an ordinance authorizing the establishment of a North Baltimore designated outdoor freshman area door between North Main Street, South Main Street, East Broadway Street, and West Broadway Street, no third readings.
This is going to be an emergency ordinance at the center of science.
Do we want to go into executive session or pay the bills?
Let's pay the bills.
Entertain a motion to pay the bills?
I'll make that motion, $5,000.
No. 500.
Yeah, 574,087,960.
There's a motion to pay the bills, welcome, second by Dave, any discussions, vote when ready?
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Ms. Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Engard?
Yes.
Mr. Swett?
Yes.
Ms. Goprae?
Yeah.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
We need a motion to move to executive session.
If you guys want to go under executive session.
Okay, I'll make that motion. Be specific about.
You got to be specific about what you're going in on there.
Okay. Personnel under 121.22G I.
G1.
G1.
To consider personnel?
Personnel dismissal discipline, motion to exempt them, demotion or compensation of public employees, or official of the investigation charges.
Okay. There's, there's a motion on the floor, is there, is there a second?
Yeah.
There's a second, any discussion, who do you guys want in that executive session?
We were going to talk to Mr. Brochus about police matters, if you guys have to stay with that, and well, are we going to go to the executive session, are we going?
Well, we're going to give a five minute break before we go into executive session.
Ms. Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Engard?
Yes.
Mr. Swett?
Yes.
Ms. Goprae?
Yeah.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Good, thank you very much for your time, and you expect?
Making sure this time, Craig, camera is in line.
Okay. Move everything up, open up, please.
Right, we still have the title.
Yeah, he's just acting chief, yes.
I know, having the, making more decisions.
Yeah, he's still got signed, I think he's the acting chief.
Hi Sue. Where's your friends at?
Wait, wait, Mr. Cook.
Virginia.
We are live still, yep.
You got my highest score ever.
So we are back in regular session. What item would you like to cover first, the utility? I think that's going to be the simplest.
Yep.
We have three items to cover. Well, I'm kind of trying to drag this out until Mr. Cook gets back.
Yeah.
Till Bill gets back, I'm trying to, he can't. Of course, if everybody's going to vote on it.
Yeah.
All she needs are a majority. So the conversation was to hire a full-time utility department operator.
Operator at $17 per hour.
$17 per hour, going from four, four employees.
Two, five.
To five, and it was always five employees, we just never replaced when we went down the floor.
Yeah, business needs a change.
Or to advertise, excuse me, to advertise at $17.
Yeah, we don't have a candidate, we're going to advertise.
So advertise.
Yes.
For a candidate for the utility department, thank you, at $17 an hour, going from.
Are you making the motion?
Yeah. I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
There's a motion on the floor and there's a second, is there any other discussion? Vote when ready please.
Mr. Engard?
Yes.
Mr. Swett?
Yes.
Ms. Goprae?
Yeah.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Ms. Hefner?
Yes.
Moving on to Sergeant, let's go ahead and do Sergeant, let's go ahead and do Sergeant Brochus, that is our acting police chief, we discussed that we would like to give him a raise commensurate with what our acting, what our current police chief is making, since he is out, since he's administering all the roles and then so, so we would take him 50 cents?
29.50.
To what the current chief makes per hour, which is?
35.29.
$35.29 per hour, so it would be a $5.79 raise. That's up to you guys, so that, put that in your motion, so that's.
That might be a pain in the ear.
It's not easy with pension as much as anything.
I think that he would, I think that going forward would make him.
I agree.
Feel very appreciated, I think we're good.
He even, he even alluded to, you guys aren't paying me a dollar for that, I don't mind doing it for, but now it's, we don't know.
Yeah, we know it's longer term.
So we'll let him know, I'll call him after this.
I'll make the motion, the mayor.
Do we need to put on that for the duration of indeterminate? While he's acting chief. While he's acting chief. I'll second that motion.
Please put that in the minutes while he's acting chief, make sure that gets on there, Becky, thank you, there's a motion and a second, any other discussion, vote when ready please.
Mr. Swett?
Yes.
Ms. Goprae? Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Ms. Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Engard?
Yes.
And I'll entertain a motion to, um. Yep, to Denise Shoup, is, um, it's getting late, yeah, to make, she has fulfilled her probationary period time for, to be acting supervisor of the dispatch, so I am asking that this body consider making that a full-time position a permanent.
I would make that motion that that is the permanent position to be full-time.
There is no additional compensation, she's already getting it, so just making it permanent. Any other discussion? Vote when ready please.
Ms. Goprae?
Yes.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Ms. Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Engard?
Yes.
Mr. Swett?
Yes.
I was going to call him.
We've already paid the bills, is there any other old business, any other new business?
I'll make a motion adjourned.
A motion on the floor to adjourn, there's a second, vote when ready please.
A second.
Oh, he did.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Hey, man.
Ms. Hefner?
Yes.